David, you want to go ahead?
Thank you.
Run a little behind. We've got some other stuff to do, but we'll take care of you first.
Thank you very much. After my presentation, I'll give everybody a copy of my presentation, as well as a synopsis, background, and some recitations. And this, I only made one copy of, but this is basically all the open records, or most of the open records that we obtained that relate to this matter and that we think substantiate the concerns that I'm going to discuss today during my presentation. And I'll leave this with you as well.
Go.
Good afternoon, and thank you for providing me the time to address the full commission with some concerns I have regarding KSA 754304 and the continuing alleged O'Hare Law LLC $4,612.08 monthly orally-made service contract being paid out of the county attorney's elected office budget each month. Six months ago, these allegations only concerned the county attorney's conduct. Unfortunately, because of your actions over the past six months, I fear that some of you may also be facing sanctions or recourse. Six months ago, on October 23rd, 2017, I came before you and I provided information concerning serious allegations I believe were well-known to this commission prior to my initial appearance. The allegations involved conflicted contract-making and participation in the making of professional service contracts by the Lincoln County Attorney with a firm the Lincoln County Attorney had a substantial interest in, O'Hare Law LLC. This matter also involved contract billing statements and payments that you were approving and for which you also permitted the use of public monies. I was very careful six months ago not to offer my opinion on whether KSA 754304 was being violated by the county attorney. At the end of my presentation back in October, you may recall that I asked that you follow your sworn oaths and uphold and follow the laws of the state, and I asked you to seek a legal opinion from the state attorney general. I hope all of you recall that. I certainly recall that. I've waited six months for some members of this commission and the county attorney to do the right thing. I think I've also been very patient despite what I recall some of you said about my presentation and in the discussions that have ensued over the prior six months. In fact, I believe today may be six months to the very day I spoke before this commission about this serious concern. After reading numerous previous Kansas Attorney General and Governmental Ethics Commission opinions, and obtaining records under the Kansas Open Records Act, and watching videos of recorded commission meetings allowed under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, I believe that there is substantiation that supports the allegation that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, in her official capacity as Lincoln County Attorney and as a principal member in O'Hare Law LLC, may have violated and may be continuing to violate the conflicted contract-making and participation prohibitions in KSA 754304. Let me be clear, I am not accusing her of being guilty of a crime as it relates to the statute. However, as the highest law enforcement officer in this county and an officer of the court, the county attorney must be held to the highest standard when it comes to matters of public integrity and avoiding conflicts of interest which include conflicted contract-making. As the county commission is the highest elected authority body in this county, this commission has to be held to the highest standard when it comes to avoiding conflicted contracting arrangements as well. If the county attorney and county commission can't be trusted to contact the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission before participating in contracting like this, it raises questions for some of you about your fitness to continue in your elected positions as commissioners. Other Kansas state agencies, Kansas cities, school districts, and counties regularly seek the guidance from the Ethics Commission before acting in contracts like this. Other Kansas state agencies, Kansas cities, school districts, and counties regularly seek opinions from the state attorney general when there's even the slightest suspicion that they may not be complying with state laws that they are not exempt from. For years, citizens have had concerns about these alleged conflicted contract-makings, and I believe it was their concerns that prompted Commissioner Flew to investigate. When my wife and I heard these rumors, as we've done with other rumors, we looked into the matter ourselves. We've never had a vendetta against the county attorney or any of you. I hope that you recall that when questions about these payments to O'Hare LLC were first raised by a newly-elected commissioner, I believe excuses were made claiming these were reimbursements for things like the copy machine. But I believe you will recall, after records revealed the canon copy machine was indeed paid by the county attorney's budget separately from these monthly contractual payments, that the story seemed to shift again, trying to argue there were still some other legitimate reimbursements that were being paid for. When Commissioner Flew persisted in her questioning and kept trying to get more details on what these reimbursements were for, I recall that even the county attorney herself responded to one of her questions with a question of her own which I found to lack candor. You may recall that a high FBI official recently lost his job for answering questions with a lack of candor. The county attorney, I believe, is an officer of the court, and while she may not be under oath when speaking before the commission, I believe that answering a serious question about how public monies are being spent out of her official office budget with a question that completely evades the question being asked only serves to increase the suspicion that she may be in violation of KSA 754304. It certainly raised my suspicions. I hope this commission will recall that this exchange was videotaped and is available for anyone to watch online. I believe that when this matter is referred to the proper investigational authorities, they may be interested in that verbal exchange as well. I believe when an experienced attorney responds to a question, by responding with another question without answering the original question, it is a conscious and well-honed act to evade the question. I've honestly lost track of all the stories and excuses I've heard from certain elected officials since these payments began being scrutinized. When my wife and I requested billing and other records through the Kansas Open Records Act, we discovered that there apparently was never any signed contract between the county attorney, the O'Hare Law LLC firm, or Lincoln County, for now it has approached or passed over $200,000 in law firm payments. That alone raises serious questions about the prudence and lawfulness of this county and the county attorney. Who on earth has ever heard of a law firm that bills tens of thousands of dollars a year without an engagement contract with terms, stipulations, and other signed contractual items? Who on earth has ever heard of a government entity that doesn't use purchase orders and other contractual instruments that set the terms and conditions of any long-term and substantial monthly professional services contract like this? When through open records requests, no signed written contract could be found, we were then told by an elected official that these were orally-made service contracts. Well, that's probably a new one for the state of Kansas, and it might be a new one for the attorney general too, which is why I provided this commission a list of questions back in October, which I had hoped you would seek a legal opinion for. After we received the billing records, we discovered that the service contract invoices seemed to be duplicated invoices, redated, without any itemization or substantiation of claims for payment beyond the actual labor being claimed. The labor itself wasn't being itemized. Each bill didn't even have a start and end of service date. Who has ever received a law firm bill like this? Even after nearly more than four years of this business arrangement, I don't think anyone knows how many hours of labor O'Hare Law LLC actually provides this county in a given month. So no matter how busy the county attorney may claim her elected office staff is chasing bad checks or pleading out cases, and regardless what her utility bills are in any month, it is alleged that she approves payments to her law firm for the exact same amount every month. I will also offer this opinion. The entire situation appears to be just as bad as the Kansas state legislature probably expected a conflicted contract-making might be, which is probably why they prohibit elected officials from participating in any way with contracting with firms they have a substantial interest in, as previous attorney general opinions, including 82-144, have said clearly. One thing that is indisputable is that since these conflicted contracts began, the cost to the county has nearly tripled compared to what the service contracts used to cost by the previous law firm. Nearly tripled. And please, I recall all the excuses I've heard made to date, and I reject every one of them. Whether or not KSA 754304 has been violated, I think this arrangement is conflicted, just like a lot of dealings this county gets involved with, and it doesn't serve the public interest. If the county attorney ever felt her workload was not adequately compensated, she had every right to negotiate a higher salary. When she recently was offered that at a commission meeting, I recall she responded, and I quote, "We're not there yet." That's on videotape. What does that even mean? I will respectfully submit that if the county offered a higher salary, other attorneys might actually move to Lincoln County and run for this elected position, and I think the county attorney knows it. The benefits that the county attorney derives from this obviously conflicted arrangement, in my opinion, greatly exceeds her county attorney's salary. The monthly service contract payments alone may be greater. All the equipment, telecommunications services, technical support, warranty contracts, shared equipment, perhaps even shared office supplies, and certainly shared employees allowed the county attorney, in my opinion, to split off from the old firm she worked at, set up very nice digs on Lincoln Ave. with combined signage showing her elected office position in her private law firm with her own name on the window. I believe that the county attorney gained substantially bigger and better furnished offices, recently remodeled, I might add, for the Jennifer O'Hare's newly-formed law firm that she might not have had if she kept her private law office separate from our elected law office. I find it hard to believe that at minimum it would have been a lot harder to employ her sister full-time in her new law firm had she not been able to sign up the county as one of her largest and consistent business clients through this professional services contract. The current contracting arrangement, I believe, puts nearly as much or more money into the O'Hare Law LLC than Jennifer O'Hare may make through a county salary. I've also walked through the courthouse. I've seen how much wasted space this county has created in it. You basically have a large rec room for the county bus drivers in one office, and then you have another office that you take license pictures in that is also a waste as well. And you have the large basement meeting room that could easily double as a conference room. And we're even providing free office space to the director of the LCEDF, which is a private nonprofit entity and not even a department of the county. Larger counties than ours put their county attorney in the basement, and you don't hear complaints. They don't set them up in brand-new cost-share digs on the main street at substantial high cost to the taxpayer. Whether or not this county sees fit to refer this matter to the state attorney general's office for the disposition it deserves under the law, I would like to see the county attorney in this courthouse. Hire her a secretary if she wants one. Keep her private business separate from her public business, and please do this now. Six months ago, had you terminated the monthly contract, had you reported the matter to the state attorney general's office, some of you could claim that you were never knowingly aware these contract-makings were possibly illegally made under state law. I would have believed you. But after seeing your behavior these past six months, I can only conclude that you've been party to this all along and you simply don't care whether or not KSA 754304 is being violated or not. You don't seem to think the law applies. I believe there is substantiated concern that the county attorney broke this law. Whether she has or not, she deserves to have this matter cleared up by the proper investigational authority post haste. Please, report the suspected unlawful conduct on the part of the county attorney to the state attorney general's office. I expect you to fulfill your sworn oaths and follow the Kansas County Commissioners Association Code of Ethical Conduct rules for county commissioners, which you may be familiar with. Principle number one, which includes, "A commissioner has an obligation to report suspected illegal misconduct by another elected official to the proper investigative authorities." All of you know the state attorney general's office is the proper investigational authority for matters of public integrity on the part of elected officials. Since October, I've been shocked and appalled to hear other Board of County Commissioners offer justifications for continuing to pay these contracts. I recall that these excuses included that the contract-making saved the county money, and that similar conduct may be occurring in other part-time county attorney-run offices. I will respectfully remind the Board of County Commissioners that the paid office expenses in the county attorney's budget have nearly tripled since these conflicted contract-makings began. I don't see any savings. Whether or not any of you think this arrangement saves the county money, I do not believe it is legal to use the public good doctrine to justify breaking a state law if it's being violated. And I won't even offer a rebuttal on the other defense offered, that other part-time county attorneys may be doing the same thing, because I pray, I pray that claim isn't true for the sake of our state and the rule of law in other Kansas counties. For the sakes of your offices, for the sake of our county, and for the sake of our state and its laws, please, report the suspected unlawful conduct to the state attorney general's office post haste, so it receives the proper disposition under state law it deserves. I still hold out hope that some exculpatory information or explanation from the state attorney general's office can be provided that will clear this cloud from the county attorney's office in some of you. To conclude, I believe all of you, including the county attorney, are full of good intentions for this county. I don't believe there was ever intent to simply pocket money at taxpayer expense. But I do believe the length of time you've served in these elected positions may have corrupted your point of view of this law, and may have corrupted your attitude when it comes to setting a high standard of public integrity under the law and avoiding conflicts like this. It is my opinion that I have personally witnessed some of you not doing the diligence and exercising the prudence your sworn oaths require you to do when you claim to serve all of us. Time is of the essence. Please perform your sworn oaths, and stop violating the very first principle of the Kansas County Commissioners Ethical Conduct rules by blocking motions to refer this to the state attorney general's office. Please stop making excuses. I, for one, am very worried about the legal status of our county attorney. I hope the attorney general finds no law was broken, but if he does, this law has been violated, the county attorney has to be held to the same standard of law that any one of us as citizens would be, or the rule of law is lost in Lincoln County. The county attorney should not enjoy special privilege above the laws of the state. And if time permits, I would like to read a list of recitations as it applies to KSA 754304 in this matter. And if not, perhaps Commissioner Flew will use her time to read them. I will not read the background section, as I believe that is just a rehash of what is already well-known, but the synopsis and the recitation makes citations of the statute in question, and I believe substantiates that unlawful conduct may have occurred. I also request that when you refer this matter to the state attorney general, you include this letter, from which I have read, and the accompanying synopsis, background, recitations, along with a stack of evidence that I put on your table. Either way, I will be sending a copy of this to the state attorney general myself, so if you choose to omit any information, the AG may be aware of it. Thank you. Have I used up all my time?
You're going to reel your time down.
Do I have any?
She yielded her time.
Oh, all right, thank you. Here's the synopsis. This is essentially what I recommend you refer to the state attorney general, and I also respect if the county wants to hire a non-conflicted attorney to go over this information. I'm just providing this as a non-attorney, as a citizen who's invested a lot of time researching this law and the information. Synopsis: It is alleged that beginning in 2013, Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney and principal member of O'Hare Law LLC, has made and/or participated in the making of conflicted, no-bid, monthly orally-made service contracts between the O'Hare Law LLC, a firm Jennifer O'Hare has a substantial interest in, as defined in KSA 754301 Section A in Lincoln County, through her official Board of County Commissioners-provided county attorney budget in violation of KSA 754304 Sections A and B. It is also alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, continues to make and/or participate in conflicted, no-bid, monthly oral service contracts between O'Hare Law LLC, a firm Jennifer O'Hare has a substantial interest in, as defined in KSA 75-4301 Section A in Lincoln County, through her official Board of County Commissioners-provided county attorney budget in violation of KSA 754304 Sections A and B. The penalty for violating KSA 754304 is a Class B misdemeanor and/or removal from office upon conviction. I mentioned I skipped the background. With regards to KSA 754304, I am making the following recitations and ask that you report my letter, the synopsis, background, and these recitations to the state attorney general's office to be investigated. Either the attorney general will make an opinion and clear this cloud from the Lincoln County Attorney's office, or I pray he will act within his authority and enforce the statute equally across the entire state of Kansas. Since this commission has refused to act, refused to seek a legal opinion, refused to report the matter to the proper investigative authority, I've prepared to the best of my ability as a non-attorney, and I believe substantiated from the records obtained through the cora, this list of recitations, and is truthful as I believe. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304 Section A, no local government officer or employee shall, in the capacity of such an officer or employee, make or participate in the making of a contract with any person or business by which the officer or employee is employed or in whose business the officer or employee has a substantial interest. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, allegedly participated in the making of orally-made service contracts and then approved the use of public monies from the official county attorney budget to pay O'Hare Law LLC billing claims submitted to the county each month for payment from December 2013 through the present. These billing claims include charges for the performance of office and secretarial labor services which meets the definition of a compensatory contract as defined per KSA 754301A Section G. Whereas O'Hare Law LLC was formed and listed with the Kansas Secretary of State on December 6th, 2012, listing Jennifer O'Hare as having more than a 5% LLC member interest. Whereas annual reports filed with the Secretary of State's office list Jennifer O'Hare as a greater-than-5% member of this LLC through the present. Whereas this substantial interest in O'Hare Law LLC was present prior to Jennifer O'Hare participating and acting in the making of the professional service contract in 2013 and has remained a substantial interest through the present. Whereas as principal and presumed sole attorney in O'Hare Law LLC, Jennifer O'Hare also has met one or more of the other substantial interest definitions defined in 754301A in addition to her greater-than-5% membership interest in the LLC. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, approved O'Hare Law LLC $3,812.08 monthly service contract billings to the county from December 2013 through April of 2016 through these service contract-makings. These contracts were paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. Whereas in May 2016, Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, as evidenced in a May 31st, 2016 county commission meeting official minutes, allegedly made and participated in the making of an $800 increase in the original monthly service contract price of the monthly professional services contract. O'Hare Law LLC then billed the county for $4,612.08 retroactively for the month of May, with an invoice dated on May 25th, 2016, well before the meeting where the county attorney publicly sought the consent and approval of the Board of County Commissioners for her use of her existing office budget for the requested increase. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, approved O'Hare Law LLC $4,612.08 monthly service contract billings to the county from May of 2016 through December 2016 through these contract-makings. These contracts were also paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. And whereas since January 2017, Jennifer O'Hare, county attorney, has continued to approve O'Hare Law LLC $4,612.08 monthly service contract billings to the county through these service contract-makings. These contracts have been paid from Jennifer O'Hare's county attorney office budget in addition to and separate from her county attorney's salary. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, participated in the making of other contracts for goods and services which conferred benefits to the O'Hare Law LLC law firm, which included co-locating the county attorney's office inside the O'Hare Law LLC law firm newly leased offices, and seeking cost-sharing agreements for other equipment, goods, and services needed by both the newly-formed O'Hare Law LLC law firm and the county attorney. Whereas pursuant to KSA 75-4304 Section B, no person or business shall enter into any contract or any local government officer or employee acting in that capacity as a signatory or/or have participant in the making of the contract and is employed by or has a substantial interest in that person or business. Whereas Jennifer O'Hare, principal member of the O'Hare Law LLC, allegedly hired and directed and managed O'Hare Law LLC employees to provide services for the Lincoln County attorney, and then approved and made monthly service contract billing claims by redating an identical invoice and presented these contract billings for payment each month utilizing the county attorney, Board of County Commission-approved budget authority of her elected office. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304 Section C, a local governmental officer or employee does not make or participate in the making of a contract if the officer or employee abstains from any action in regard to the contract. Whereas county commission meeting minutes also evidence that Jennifer O'Hare did not abstain, and indeed actively participated in the making of the contracts by using her elected office authority to negotiate an increase to the county attorney budget approved by the Board of County Commissioners, and then used her elected office authority to direct that budget to pay O'Hare Law LLC, a firm in which she has a substantial interest as defined by KSA 754301A. Whereas no written contract defining the terms of the monthly billing arrangement between the O'Hare Law LLC firm and the county or county attorney has been found with any signatories, it is alleged the contract was either destroyed or orally made. The Lincoln County clerk stated she believed these were orally-made contracts. Whereas the May 13th, 2013 county commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney, county attorney Jennifer O'Hare discussed future plans for herself and her law firm, and discussed how it will affect the county attorney's office and costs associated. After discussion, the board approved payment in the amount of $400 per month towards rent expenses and further cost adjustments will be considered at a later date. Whereas the July 8th, 2013 county commission official minutes report for the county attorney, county attorney Jennifer O'Hare discussed county legal matters. O'Hare provided information on a meeting held Monday, July 15th, in Cloud County concerning court and courthouse security measures in regards to new concealed carry regulations and the exemption requested by the counties. And this is the part I want to emphasize. O'Hare related that she is completing the setup of her new office location, and related that she has personally paid for a used phone system and line installation, inquiring if the county would pay for the programming and setup, as three of the incoming phone lines will be utilized by the county attorney's office. The board approved the payment of installation services. Whereas the October 14th, 2013 county commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney, county attorney Jennifer O'Hare requested that the board consider approving moving the county attorney's office to her new law firm prior to January 1st, as there is sufficient funds available in the county attorney's budget to pay the additional costs for office expenses negotiated earlier this year while working on the 2014 budget. The board related that they would be in favor of a December 1st move contingent upon sufficient runs, funds remaining within the budget. I also want to interject, none of you are liable under the statute. I don't believe any of you have a substantial interest in O'Hare Law. She is an elected official. She has sole authority over her budget and how she spends it. The Board of County Commission only approves the budget. That's why I believe these concerns are serious, because she's, as I believe the evidence shows, has been acting and making. The coming to the Board of County Commission meetings, I believe, was for show, or political purposes. I don't know. Whereas the May 31st, 2016 county commission official meeting minutes report for the county attorney, county attorney Jennifer O'Hare requested that the contract to O'Hare Law LLC be increased to pay for an additional employee that was hired, not to be hired, was hired to help with the increased county attorney workload. After discussion, Terry Finch moved to increase the contract to O'Hare Law LLC by $800 per month through December 2016, seconded by Gerald Hill. Motion carried. Again, I want to reiterate, I think this public appearance was moot. The hire was made, the intent, the plan, the actions were already made by the county attorney. Apparently, the budget already existed. It was just for show that she came before the commission. It is alleged also that O'Hare Law LLC presented an invoice for the May contract dated six days prior to this public request, and it already had the exact $800 increase and retroactively billed the higher amount you supposedly approved for the entire month of May. Whereas in KSA 754304 Section D, this section shall not apply to the following if, "Contracts led after competitive bidding has been advertised by published notice," and "For contracts for property or services for which the price or rate is fixed by law." Whereas the Lincoln Sentinel, the official newspaper of record, appears to show no published notices for the bidding of a professional services contract for the county attorney both in 2013, prior to the making of the original contract that began in December 2013, nor when the contract was raised in May of 2016, nor when it became month-to-month in January of 2017. And whereas the price or rate for the providing of secretarial and office support services for a county attorney is not fixed by law. Therefore, it is alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County Attorney, did repeatedly act and did participate in the making of orally-made professional service contracts and contracts for other goods and services using the budget of the county attorney's office between Lincoln County and the law firm O'Hare Law LLC in which she had a substantial interest- interest without conducting competitive bidding and without using a price or rate fixed by law. The only written contracts found were the monthly billing statements, which appear to have been made and approved by Jennifer O'Hare, acting county attorney, but also principal LLC member of O'Hare Law LLC. Whereas violating the prohibition set for KSA 754304A and KSA 754304B upon conviction may be removed from office. KSA 754304 Section E, and subject to a Class B misdemeanor for each offense. KSA 754306A. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754305, any local government officer or employee who has not filed a disclosure of substantial interests shall, before acting upon any matter which will affect any business in which the officer or employee has a substantial interest, file a written report of the nature of the interest with the county election officer of the county in which it is located, all or of the largest geographical part of the officer or employee's governmental subdivision. Whereas a Kansas Open Records Act for all Jennifer O'Hare substantial interest disclosures with the county election officer in Lincoln County produced substantial interest filings which did not include O'Hare Law LLC as a substantial interest until May of 2016. Whereas pursuant to KSA 754304B, any local government officer or employee does not pass or act upon any matter if the officer or employee abstains from any action in regard to the matter. Whereas County Commission minutes show that Jennifer O'Hare did not abstain from any action in regard to the matter of co-locating the county attorney's office inside her law firm, and did not abstain seeking higher...
Excuse me, David.
Yes.
You're getting kind of long here. You've already used your time and her time, or you're about done, or...
Yeah, I just have three paragraphs.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you. Therefore, it is alleged that Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County attorney, did not file a disclosure of substantial interest in the O'Hare Law LLC law firm before participating and acting in numerous matters which affected her business, O'Hare Law LLC, in which Jennifer O'Hare had a substantial interest in violation of KSA 754305 Section A. Whereas in KSA 754306A, violation of KSA 754304 or 754305 and amendments thereto, or failure to make any disclosure of substantial interests required by KSA 754302A is a Class B misdemeanor. There may be some question whether Jennifer O'Hare, Lincoln County attorney, abstained from participating or making in any way in these contract makings by seeking the Board of County Commissioners' approval and vote for directing funds in a previously negotiated budget. Kansas Attorney General Opinion 88-144 may provide some guidance regarding participation in actions and whether her appearances before the Board of County Commissioners were proper and are constituting abstaining as the law defines by publicly seeking the approval and consent of the Board of County Commissions for her intentions and actions. And that's the recommendations. That's my presentation. These are the synopsis, background, recitations, and this is all the records that we've obtained that I think substantiate some of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we've got a couple of talks...